We have two hybrid select people that are not here at this meeting, so all votes will be taken on roll call vote after each thing. And we'd like to welcome Senator Commerford for joining us this evening. And we are going to-
Good evening.
Good evening. We're going to be talking about the HAWK thing that is on the agenda for this evening, the HAWK signal light. I also have Chief Mason here that will also chime in on whatever after you have spoken to us, Joanne. So would you like to update us on what you know or have done with the DOT on this?
Absolutely. The first- if you could-
... speak with you just at the beginning of your meeting. So thanks to Carolyn for arranging that. And thank you to the town and to the chief and to everyone who has responded to that terrible tragedy, the accident that occurred. So I speak tonight reflecting Representative Carey and myself in our outreach on behalf of the town to MasDOT. So I've spoken with Director Patty Leavenworth at some length about Hadley and that particular intersection. And the director conveyed two things to me that I convey to you tonight. And I will be, of course, at your service with Dan and our teams to do whatever the town feels is best. But the director conveyed that they did send a team out, and perhaps the chief, you know this already, but they did send a team out shortly after the accident to look at the intersection and to do what is called brightening at the intersection, so renewing the paint job. She understands that that is not the totality of this. And so then the director said that she would welcome a conversation with the town, and she would bring her team, you know, so at the town's discretion and with the folks the town says is our best, to look at what else could and should be done at the intersection. The director said pretty plainly, you know, they are certainly looking at this, but they recognize both the expertise at the town level and also, you know, that you all will have ideas that they haven't thought of to make that and other intersections safer. So that, those are the two things that she conveyed to me that I pass along on behalf of Rep. Carey and myself.
One of the things that has run, brought to our attention, and we had gone over this a few years back when we were redoing Route 9, is that we really didn't want to have a crosswalk there to begin with, being that it's only a short distance from the center of town where we have lights, push buttons for people to cross at any which way that they go. And we really didn't want that there, but the DOT insisted on having that crosswalk there to begin with, and they went forward and did that. One of my theories is, and people can chime in, but my theories is, is that we don't need that there. Where it's such a short distance, I think it's a hazard with people crossing there because that light really doesn't project, it says flashing, but people don't look up, they don't see it. They just fly through the center of town, and that's like almost at a dead stop when they come to that, at that place. Now, I really think that people should be walking down to the center of town and using our crosswalk area and any other area, but I, as I understand it, that they're going to be maybe installing more of these along Route 9 as they proceed with the rest of the paving and redoing of our Route 9 project. I would prefer that they don't do that. I think that when they do this, they need to, you know, chime in on, to us on how we feel about it. I would like our Chief Mason to chime in on how he feels about this because, of course, that's his expertise area of what we should be doing. So Chief Mason, would you like to chime in for Senator Commerford, please?
Sure. Thank you for being here, Senator. The Senator and I have actually spoken on the phone about this issue last week or the week before, so I think she kind of knows how I feel, and I think everyone at least here knows how I feel about the light. I don't, I can't speak to the discussion that occurred when it was put in because I don't recall those discussions and I don't even know if I was a part of them. What I can tell you is that I have never liked the light because I think it's confusing. I think it's pretty evident that it's confusing judging by how many people drive through the light. Since the crash happened, we have been doing, you know, a lot more enforcement in that area, and we've actually had plainclothes officers cycling the light. And then have, we have officers who are waiting to pull cars over if they run through the light. We've done it on two or three different occasions. One of them was just this evening. They cycled the light 10 times and they stopped five cars that drove through the lights that were flashing. So that's, that's kind of the first point in that, you know, it's a 35 zone. People on Route 9 drive faster than that anyways, and so when the light starts to flash, people will drive through it. That's number one. The second part of it is that, again, it's confusing. If you have to put a sign up on a light to tell people when they're allowed to drive again, that's a pretty good indication that it's a poor design for a light. If you don't know what to do and when you can go again, that's problematic from my, from my viewpoint. What I can tell you is that MasDOT, you have at least one more of these lights coming in in town. It's going to be on South Maple Street where the bike path is. So it's not going to be on Route 9. But you are getting multiple more crosswalk, standard crosswalk lights, which are those, they call them rectangular rapid, they got acronyms for everything. It's a, it's just the standard rectangular sign that will flash that looks more like what a regular crosswalk looks like. You are getting multiple of those types of lights that are going to be on Route 9. I think part of the problem is that crosswalks generally are at intersections, and the crosswalk lights don't activate until all of the lights in the intersection are red and have been red. So everyone is already stopped. You don't have that with this HAWK light. You have 35, 40 mile per hour traffic traveling, and then all of a sudden these lights activate, and people have to figure out, number one, what does this mean? And number two, am I going to stop? I can tell you that the people that we've pulled over for running through the lights give the same excuse that they give when they run through a regular red light. I didn't have enough time to stop, to stop safely, or I didn't understand what it meant, or I didn't think I could stop in time, so I just went through it. So I can't give you any arguments as to, you know, why people are running the lights. They just, like I said, it's the same argument when they run a regular red light. My guess is, is that I, as I, when I spoke with Senator Commerford last, when she was going to speak with DOT, my guess is, is that DOT has data on how effective these lights are, and I think that's really what we need. We need to know what is, how effective are these HAWK lights as opposed to the regular kind of crosswalk lights? If you are going to remove it altogether, then you don't need the data. But if you're going to remove the HAWK light and put a different type of signal in, I think you need to get some data from MasDOT to this, to determine whether or not people just run through those as well. Because, again, this is not an intersection. The cars are not going to already be stopped. They're going to be coming at 40 miles an hour, and so when those yellow lights come on, the rapid rectangular ones, I'm assuming MasDOT has some data to tell you whether or not people blow through those just like they blow through the HAWK light. So I think that's kind of, that would be the direction that I would suggest to the board is, number one, determine whether or not you want to keep the crosswalk. If you don't, then you don't need to go any further into your data analysis. If you do, then I think finding out from MasDOT what they would replace it with is imperative. Because if the data that they have suggests that those regular crosswalks are not something that they would use here, then kind of answers your question. But again, going back to the beginning, I really dislike the light. I just, I don't, there's three lights on there. I don't understand why they couldn't be red, yellow, green, just like a regular traffic light. Why can't one of them just be changed to a different color? To me, that would have made a heck of a lot more sense, but I'm not an engineer, so that's my two cents. And again, Senator, thank you for your help on this.
Do we know why that light was put there? I know Joyce alluded to the fact that she doesn't really understand, but does anybody know why they decided to put that there?
Because there was a crosswalk there to begin with that went from the church over to across the street. So that, there's always been some type of crosswalk there, but in their thinking, the DOT thought that they would put a light there that would help with the crossing right there so that they could go to the bus stop on the other side, which is in front of Cumberland's.
So there was also, and Joyce, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I worked here for 20 years, but it's faded in my memory. I believe there was also a crosswalk in the West Street area in the Commons. And because of the fact that we've had a lot of fatal crashes at that corner, I think it was determined that that was not a good place for it. And so I think what they did ultimately was find this place between what Joyce was just describing and the West Street and put it there. Problem is, is that if you're heading eastbound, coming from the bridge and heading to Amherst, and there are cars queued, meaning the lights activated and cars are stopped, and you come around that corner at 40, which is what the speed limit is?
Yeah.
I mean, I've been in a cruiser and I've had to jam my brakes on. So it's tight on that side.
That's a thought I've had, is that, that's, it's in a terrible place from what you, based on what you just said. I agree with you 100 percent. It's too close to that corner, the curve in the road, and people can't react fast enough when they're coming around the corner. So I don't know, what's the demand for it? Do we know that? How much, how often does it get used?
Again, again, my guess is, is that MasDOT probably has data on that as well. We're going through this Safe Roads MOU to get more speed board signs from the state, and part of the MOU is that we, that this machine itself will collect data and we send it to the state. I don't think that there's many things out there that don't collect data anymore. I don't think they even make them, that, that won't somehow collect this data, whether, how much it's used, and they probably have data about, you know, how often it's disregarded. So I think, you know, requesting that from them would be helpful, but like I said, if you're, if you're going to remove it altogether, you don't have to go that far. If you're going to keep it and you want to see if it's safe or safer than an alternative, that's where you're going to have to ask, we're going to have to ask MasDOT.
Joanne, do you have any-
What- That light is, what Mike said is, first it comes on yellow for not blinking for a period of time, then it blinks yellow, then it turns red. And that's, the timing on that is totally different than the light on Damon Road. That one just comes on, blinks yellow and goes to red. And I think that we need to look at the timing on that, and I think Mike is also very green, yellow and red. It would be a lot more understandable for the people if we're going to leave it there.
Timing, Jane, is that MasDOT has engineers that are, that specifically do the mathematics to figure out timing of traffic lights. So they have people that have these equations that are seven pages long to figure this stuff out. They're super smart people. We have put requests into these engineers in the past, and they actually, they do listen to us, and so if the timing is an issue, we can certainly reach out to, to one of the engineers and see if they can take a look at it. But they're going to go by whatever the state's standards are, and my guess is, is whatever it's set at is what they, what that threshold is.
But they're missing the point of common sense. They can be as smart as can be, but the common sense is not there for the center of town of Hadley and the traffic that goes through there on a daily basis from 6 o'clock in the morning until 6 o'clock at night at least. Senator, do you have any other comments about how we should proceed with the DOT and have them listen to us? Because they're not very good at listening.
Well, first of all, thank you to the chief for that overview. And yes, chief, you did make your concerns completely known. It was helpful in my conversation with the director. You know, I, I work for the town, and so does Dan. So I am, I would be most happy to work with you to schedule a meeting with Director Leavenworth, who is new herself, right? So there's an opportunity, or new to this role, there's an opportunity for us to, you know, ask for the director's sort of new focus on this. So I'd be happy to work with you, you know, to get the soonest possible meeting with the town. And then, you know, you can, the town can help direct Dan and I to, to get the kind of folks from MasDOT who you would like to see, you know, exactly with the expertise that folks are talking about. You can also help direct the agenda in advance, like, hey, we want to talk about these things at the meeting. So that'll help Director Leavenworth get the right folks. And then we meet on the town's terms. You know, we can meet in Hadley, we can go to view the intersection together, all of these things are possible. And, you know, when we, I understand the urgency that the town is bringing and the family is bringing, and so we will work super quickly to set this up. And again, I, you know, I found the director very willing to engage, so I'm, I'm hopeful that it could be a productive meeting.
Does the board feel that, I personally would like a, a meeting with the director, would everybody else?
Yeah, I would.
They're both nodding, yes.
Molly's nodding, yes.
Okay. All right. That would be wonderful, Senator, if you could set that up and work with Carolyn to do that for, for us to, and Chief Mason, who said we could be, he could be involved with it also.
You may want to also try to, sorry.
Try what?
I was just going to say, you may want to also try to find the history of how and why it was put there in the first place, you know, see if we can find the minutes of whatever meeting that was to see, or if anybody remembers, because-
Seems to me it's related to courthouse.
Sure. My guess is, is someone that wears a black robe said, we want a crosswalk there, and they got a crosswalk there.
Yeah.
There was a Hopkins student that was hit also many years ago when I was still in school.
Yeah.
And it was, Pat was crossing to, right, it was still Donut Man at the time. They were crossing south of that.
So there is a history of having had somebody hit there once before, so I think it would behoove us all to have that meeting with the Director Leavenworth and, and see what we can do to have a sit-down with her.
So I would work with- The agenda that you all would like, the town would like, and then also the kinds of conversations, the kinds of expertise that you would like MasDOT to be able to bring, so that it can be as productive as possible. And I think we send all of that in advance so that the director understands the team that she'll want to bring to meet the town's concerns head-on.
Great. Thank you so much for coming tonight and being, participating in this discussion.
Oh, my goodness. Remember, I work-
We, we also understand how busy your schedule is, so when you're able to take the time out and come and be with us, we appreciate it.
It's an important issue, and I so much appreciate the town and the chief's willingness and robust engagement. So I will follow up. I just am having a meeting this evening, but I'll follow up tomorrow or this evening after the meeting to, to start working on the email to MasDOT with Carolyn and the chief to get it right.
Would be great. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Done.
Yes. If I can just let you know that Representative Carey has been in, in discussions with Senator Commerford and myself, and he did try to work this into his schedule and couldn't today. So he's, we'll include him in all those conversations as well.
Right. So should we, do you understand what, what we want, or do we need to tell you? Because Senator Commerford said we should be as explicit as possible in what information we're trying to garner-
If you want, definitely give me information, yeah.
Do you want it now?
Sure. Now or send me an email.
Okay. Well, my concern is the history, why that thing got put there in the first place, and what its current historic usage is on a daily basis.
I can remember the discussion. God knows I've been here long enough, but we did have a very long discussion. I don't know, Molly, if you're shaking your head or not, if you remember it or not. Molly has laryngitis, so she's not able to project with us. I had to say that, Molly, because usually you're verbal, so I have to say that.
I'm a little funny, yeah.
I understand where you're coming from. I had that myself a couple of years ago. Everybody was glad about that. But anyway, so we could very well give Carolyn, and Molly, you can email your concerns, but do you remember when we had this, this discussion with DOT, when they were redoing Route 9 in the center of town?
I, I know it was when Marla Warner was DPW director, because he made the presentation to explain to us what a HAWK signal even was. And I agree with you, Joyce. I think they were trying to find a path away from West Street, but to allow another crossing to take place, and they landed on this particular spot.
So close to the center of town where we made sure that the lights were working and people could cross in that area. So it didn't make sense to us to have one that really didn't have any good direction, and we just thought it was in the middle of very fast traffic. So, you know, we've already voiced our opinion.
Was there a reason that this conversation went on, that they didn't want to put a traffic light at West Street and Route 9? Because that's always been a terrible intersection for cars to get out of West Street onto. It's where all the accidents happen.
They heard our concerns and they just did what they felt they wanted to do when they were doing-
Kill two birds with one stone and also get data about the number of accidents between the Pride gas station in the center of town, because maybe there's some sort of traffic calming mitigation that could be wrapped into this.
On either side, it's 40 miles an hour, then it goes down to 35 just before Esalen, and then to, I think, just after Weinzig.
Yeah, you have five speed changes on Route 9.
Yeah. I mean, is it possible instead to maybe, instead of going from 40 to 35, to 40 to 30, just for that high-traffic area?
But we've taught, we've had that discussion, and Chief Mason, you've been hired since then to know that we had that discussion about changing the-
I think they acquiesced to some of our requests. I think they did change some of them, but not all of them.
But we did ask for a change of speed limit on Route 9.
Yep.
It actually, and I know that Lieutenant Cook wanted to do that also.
Shouldn't there be like a 21, a 20 mile an hour for the school zone anyway, if that's not posted?
It's supposed to be when the lights are flashing. That would be, make more sense if we had lights flashing in the center of town for school zone, like most towns do at 20 miles per hour when schools are in session.
Well, that's, I think that's what Molly was just saying about, you know, some type of traffic safety mitigation. But if we go, if we stretch it a little bit further and go from Pride to Hopkins and, and see how many crashes we've had, maybe there's something that their engineers would look at, and maybe they would put a light in at West Street at that point to try to stop traffic. And once they, once it stops, then, you know, the speed-up section is, is in the Hopkins area, and they just can't get going fast enough. Maybe that's an option. I don't know exactly. My guess is, is we're not, I mean, they'd have to put in some type of a two, a dual traffic light for, for both those West Street entrances onto Route 9, and it was probably just cost prohibitive for them, so they figured we'll put the HAWK-
It's people wanting to take the shortcut. That's the problem.
Yeah.
Anything further? Do you all want to, I'm talking to the ceiling, but I'm not, I'm talking to them. Do you all want to?
Mike had suggested, and I would like to know if they ever have any of those HAWK lights that are green, yellow and red.
Ever had what, Jane?
HAWK lights where instead of a solid yellow, flashing yellow, red, it was solid green, flashing yellow, red, so that it was more like a normal traffic light, if you will, and people might understand it.
I'm unaware of something like that, but that, we can put that in the email, you know, as far as what we're going to be asking them, so they can bring their experts. My guess is, is they would bring designers with them to explain all the different types of lights they have.
And if, after tonight's meeting, if you have anything, please email your questions to Carolyn.
My, my suggestion would be if the town, you know, as far as what to ask for, if the town does decide to remove the light, but they want to keep the crosswalk, what would they replace it with? And do they, you know, is, do they have any data to suggest the, the replacement is safer in any way than the HAWK? I mean, I know the town's experience with MasDOT is not great in every area. They're not great communicators or anything, but my guess is, is that they probably have data to back up that, that light, if you want a crosswalk there, that light's the light appropriate for it. I don't like it, but I'm not a MasDOT engineer either, so.
Mike, are you familiar with the crosswalks up at Mount Holyoke College?
Mount Holyoke? Yeah, the ones with the, that have the raised yellow lights.
Yeah, so they've got, they've got stuff on the sides of the streets that are at eye level.
Yep.
Then the, the street lights up.
That's-
And that, my daughter lives in South Hadley, I go there quite a bit, and that attracts my attention very easily.
And I think that's, that is one of the designs that they use on, in places where you have traveling traffic, like here, at a, at speed, that is not at, at an intersection. So you need to notify people to slow down and stop on a road where you wouldn't normally be stopping. And so I think that's what those are, are, they call them rectangular reflective traffic lights or whatever they are for, for crosswalks. And they're designed specifically for vehicles at travel speed. I think that's what they designed those things for. And so that's why I'm curious as to why we didn't, maybe they didn't have those? I mean, I don't know how long those Mount Holyoke ones have been in, but, I mean, maybe they were trying something new.
Amberstelich has, Amberstelich has something like that, too.
Yeah, they just said-
Yeah, they have the raised, you know, the, like, the speed humps. I know that's a, that's a four-letter word here, but, you know, there are, I think there's other, other ways to do it. And you're right, the, those Mount Holyoke ones are right in your eye, eye, you know, line, your line of sight. Plus, there's, there's, there's not only visual, but there's physical cues to get you to slow down and stop for those things. You know, the HAWK lights are high up and-
I think another concern though, too, is that once they're done with Route 9, because I think you see, especially in rush hour time, that the- I think you see, especially in rush hour time, that the traffic is backed up almost to combies already, and that when you have two roads, you won't have such a backup and a slowdown. So I think the concern, too, is people will be traveling faster.
Yep.
Once you have a four lanes, instead of just the two.
That's a good point to bring out to them at that meeting also.
Yeah.
And Hawk lights.
And that they collect it, but, you know.
There is studies on them, mostly in promoting them, but, so I don't know if you want to, if those are going to be as reliable. They're more, it's not specific towards this area. It's pretty, you know, all over the place. But I can, I can send you the copy of that. But I think you need to hear it from Mass DOT.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But the reality is, we're in a really, really strange, unique situation where you have, you know, smaller population towns surrounding this, and just, it's this kind of a, I would say it's a really unique area that we live in with the level of traffic that we have on a single road in a, in a small town.
You have 50, you have a 5,000-person population in this town, and the average annual daily traffic count that goes through the entire town on all roads, average, it raises and lowers when school is in session, is 100,000 cars. That's not just Route 9, that's all of your roads. And all of your roads now, because of the construction in this town, are being used. We're getting traffic complaints on every road possible, because people are trying to find any way around this mess out here. So you have, that, unique is the best possible way to put it. I can't think of another community in this state that looks like this. 5,000 people and 100,000 people driving through it on a daily basis. So with that uniqueness comes, you know, the, the chance for us to be unique with the solutions that we come up with, you know, for situations like this. And so hopefully, what's her name? Director Leavenworth? She has a military prison named after her?
Leavenworth.
Hopefully she'll have some answers for us, so.
Maybe she'll have some answers, but.
The other reality is that people have to understand that there, through everything, there may not be a better option.
Right. Exactly right. And that's, that's the other part of this thing, is that, you know, before this tragedy happened, I can't tell you if I had, if we've had another incident since they put that in, nor can I tell you, besides my own dislike for the complexity of the light, that I've heard any official complaints about the light either. So that, you know, as terrible of a tragedy as this was, I think that does need to be said, because you're right. I don't want people to come in here expecting this is going to be changed and fixed and nothing, you know, whatever, nothing bad's going to happen again, because they may come in and show us, you can't put anything else there. This is what it is, and this is what it's staying.
Well, even in the center of town, there's accidents all the time, whether the lights turn or not, or whatever's going on, and certainly that could happen to a pedestrian in the center of town. I mean, you don't know.
This intersection right over, right over here, Nine and Middle, this was ranked the third most dangerous intersection in Massachusetts for like six years straight, before they changed the lighting pattern. So, you know, this town has a lot of crashes, and if we can do something to mitigate, especially vehicle versus pedestrian crashes, I think we should take the opportunity to do so. But Amy's right. They may come in and give us information that suggests that this is your best option. You either leave this here, or you take the crosswalk out altogether, and don't let people cross the street there.
We didn't want it there to begin with.
Well, like I said.
We argued with them about that. I mean, that's, that's what happened back in, in when they put it in to begin with, but they insisted on putting one in, so.
I think if we can get the numbers that indicate that there's a need for it, that's one thing. If there's not a need for it, then, you know.
Yeah, people are pushing that button 50 times a day. You probably, you probably need it.
Yeah, right.
But, you know.
I mean, I travel through twice a day, sometimes four times, and most of the time when those things are, the only issue I ever see is when it's blinking, people not going.
Yeah.
And so on the opposite end of the spectrum, that's kind of more of what you want. So.
All right. Well, everybody gather their questions and send them to Carolyn, and we'll have her set up the meeting with the DOT Director Leavenworth, and go from there. All right?
Sounds good.
Okay. Moving on. Thank you. Anything else, Chief, tonight?
I don't know. Lost.
Are you staying or going?
If there's nothing else, I'm going.
Okay. I just had one question for you. You have your, which I can announce later. You have the food drive-in. You have the tree still, angels?
Yes, the angel tree. Lauren is actually making flyers up right now that we will send out to all the department heads, and she's going to be posting all over town.
Okay, so I'll take care of that after. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any public comments this evening? We're going back to the beginning of our agenda, and we skipped over that. So any public comments here on Zoom?
I could make a couple.
Would you like to?
Sure.
Sure.
I'd like to thank the supply board for the, you know, we have the Russell School Forum. That was pretty successful. I didn't expect as many people that, you know, showed up. There was plenty of people who were interested, and it seems like it's, you know, it's the right thing to do. Get public opinion, it's public voting. So thank you all so much. The other thing is that I grew up in this neighborhood, and I cross Route 9 quite a bit in my car now, but now my kids cross Route 9 in this neighborhood on foot several times a day. I don't know if they use that signal every time, but they use it. I think it should be redesigned. I'm a strong proponent, I would, I highly recommend a crosswalk in that area. Is it in the perfect area? Who knows? It could be this way or that way a little bit. There's always, for me, I grew up around here. I know that that crosswalk has been there, you know, for the church. And when there was no light there, it didn't work much better or worse. Really, I think if it were, you know, for me to design it, I'd use a red, yellow, green light, standard traffic signal. And, you know, where you see in other areas, like in Northampton, as you go toward North King, there's a light-up sign that says signal ahead. And when the signal's red, the red lights up. And there's one like that in Belcher Town, where the light is just over a hill. So that could probably be, you know, very useful in that situation, especially with the curve and the house blocking the eastbound traffic. You know, the westbound traffic, maybe not so much. But a standard signal, green, yellow, red, that everybody understands is probably the way to go at that crosswalk. But I would highly recommend keeping a crosswalk somewhere in that area, because it does get a ton of use. You know, it's just an important thing. So thanks for addressing all of that.
Thank you.
And there's no one else for consent agenda, or public comments, sorry, add consent agenda on my brain.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the consent agenda. We have warrants, AP 2319, AP 2318 INS, AP 2318V, AP 23185, AP 2318. We have a common vehicular license for homeland suites, homeward suites. We have a Class II auto dealer's license, correct?
Yes.
And that's for Northwest Auto Sales. We have a farmer's market wine license for home fruit wine. And we have an award of a sewer pump station roof contract to U.S. Metal Roofing. Any questions? Any, can I get a motion? So moved? Second.
Yes, I'm sorry. I forgot. Row call vote. Row call vote. Row call vote. Chungalo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan? Nevin Smith? Thank you.
Okay. That would be the consent agenda. I don't see Eversource here yet.
Eversource is here. Yep.
Oh, they on there? Okay. All right. We'll go to them quickly. They want us to sign a contract. Tracy? A letter of support. So Tracy Dyke, are you here, Redmond?
I'm here. Can you hear me all right? Great. Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you again. As you may remember, we provided an update about the proposed solar and storage project at our area work center in Hadley at your last meeting. And at your request, we provided a draft letter of support for your consideration. We are hoping to build solar canopies and rooftop solar at this site, and we would be very glad if you were in support of the project. And if you are, that we did provide a draft letter of support, we would need to go to the Department of Public Utilities to get approval to, to begin the process of this project. And so we would, we would do that if we had your support, and that draft letter is sort of a way to express that. But you, of course, be welcome to change it or edit it if you like.
It's our third time that Eversource has come before us. Does any one of the board members have any questions?
I have a, an issue or a concern with the draft letter.
Okay.
I believe there's something missing, an omission. Second to the last paragraph begins, "Once approved by the DPW, the town of Hadley will review this project through our standard permitting and zoning processes, and will seek all permits necessary to complete the project." Town of Hadley will not seek permits for this project. I believe N-Star should be the ones that will seek the permits. So I think that N should be installed in there.
Thank you for that clarification. You're absolutely right.
Eversource will seek all permits necessary to complete the project. And also, just to be clear, the letter references DPU, Department of Public Utilities.
With this letter.
So with corrections, is there a motion?
Yeah, I will move to accept that we are, approve that we will sign this letter based on the correction I just mentioned.
Third second. Any other further discussion?
Row call vote, Chungalo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan? And Nevin Smith? Thank you.
Thank you very.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Tracy. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening. I'll follow up with the revised letter shortly.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right. And we can move on to the Hadley Snowmobile Club, usage of neurotic trail tunnel. Steve or Paul, who would like to speak?
What?
Are you on a roll tonight, huh?
Giving me a, giving me the steering wheel here. So Carolyn, did you receive the emails with the, the draft letters?
I put one of the letters, let's see. You do have...
We have one of the letters.
We have one of the letters.
Yes.
I have not heard back from Larry Tucker, who is our, on our legislative team for the State Association. He did get back to me and said that this one that had Molly's signature or name on the bottom was the one, the draft that we should be following.
That's the one I uploaded. Can you give some of the members who aren't familiar with this former, a request that you've had before, and you're bringing it to the table, just to give a little background about it, what this is for?
It's a, we're looking for a letter of support, once again, for the Hadley Snowmobile Club to have access of the rail trail and the tunnel. The tunnel, from how I understand, is owned by Mast dot. The rail trail is owned by DCR. Mast dot, we've been to a few different meetings at the District 2 office, and Mast dot consistently has been behind the project. They say that, yes, this is the perfect solution, is for your, your club to have access to the tunnel. The problem is DCR, and they're, they, you know, although they, they gave us money for a groomer to groom the trails, they're unwilling to let us use that section of trail for about, it's less than a mile, that we would need to get on, where we have permission from one abutting owner, get on the rail trail, go through the tunnel, and then permission from the other abutting owner, so we can get on the trail and off the trail with landowner permission, but using the trail. They don't, you know, for some reason, they don't think it's a good idea. Now, you know, it's only a matter of time, as we experience people crossing Route 9, before something happens. And we want to avoid this. I mean, there, there's, you know, history of DCR allowing people to use rail trails and tunnels in other parts of the state, and where, you know, our club is right in the valley here, where we don't get a lot of snow, and our season, our sledding season is getting shorter and shorter, and every two or three years, we get really enough snow to use our whole trail system. And so it's, it's not to the point where you'd see sleds go zooming through there every year, all season long. Our season is also very short, usually between two and six weeks these days. 2015, yeah, we got Club of the Year, and we groomed our trails from, you know, Belcher Town all the way to Sunderland. That was a big year, but we still had a lot of trouble crossing Route 9. It's just dangerous. And, you know, we've offered to groom that section of trail for the sleds, and also clear it for bikes, to no avail. The problem is not going to go away. You know, we've, the sleds aren't going to go away. And, you know, on a standard year, we've got 40 or 50 members. On a year like 2015, we had over 120 members. And it gets busy out there. It's, it's just a safety issue. It's not a, you know, you know, who owns what issue. We just want to make sure that the people who are using the trail stay safe. You know, we have...
Where would you get on from the north side?
I wish the map app was up and running. It's not, they don't, they don't put the app up and running until after hunting season is when the trails open. I could show you on, on the online map. You can...
Well, just, just, you can just say.
Basically, basically Weinzig's Fields, right near the 51 and over housing development that Barry Roberts just put up, right in that neighborhood, was, is where would be one entrance. And just at the, at the back fence of the storage units on Mill Valley is where we would get off. And, you know, it's, it's clear sailing in either direction from there. And right now, the way the, the trail is marked, it comes out between, geez, where the old Stan the Vegetable Man was, the...
We used to cross there in my day.
Yeah, it's been there forever.
Yes. Yeah, and head up to the house.
It's, it's pretty tight. There's a lot of development in that area now, especially with the, the new housing development. And, you know, we're not a, it's not a big deal to move the trail. The app lets us do it in real time, and if I call the association with a, a trail modification, it will literally change the map for everybody in the state within minutes. So if we have to move that trail from one, you know, between, you know, these two houses to between these two houses, we can do that quite quickly. That's not the issue. You know, the issue is that we need the trail in a safe spot, not necessarily convenient. It's, it's, it's been a long time we've been working at this. And historically, I mean, I've been, I've been traveling these trails since I was a kid, and before it was a rail trail, it was a snowmobile trail.
What was DCR's reason for denying your request?
They really give no good reason. They don't plow this section of the trail.
Right.
Right.
And we offered to at least, you know, groom this side, plow that side. And there's no... you know, they seem to think it's still dangerous, no matter what. You know, what... and the ironic thing is that people do use the rail trail for cross-country skiing. And all over the whole state, cross-country skiers use snowmobile trails, and they love that they're groomed. And they're, you know, they're very... the snowmobilers and the cross-country skiers are very courteous to each other, very aware that we both, you know, it's a shared use trail. And in many cases throughout the state, it's shared use.
Do you think one of their concerns might have been, like, potentially using it too late in the season, maybe causing any damage on the paved portion?
It's... I mean, it's possible. But, you know, if you look at the other data, we can get grants to put down neoprene mats or PTEX mats throughout the whole length of the tunnel. So that if we do have sledders that have pick tracks and carbide runners, it's not going to damage that. You know, that happens in other states, it happens in other parts of this state. You know, the bulk of the sledding happens west of here. But we do have sledding east of here. And last year, was it last year or the year before, the bulk of the sledding was happening actually from Belcher Town to the east. That's where all the snow was. And, you know, the clubs who don't typically get a lot of traffic, we're getting a ton of traffic. And, you know, we have a lot of back and forth between Fish and Wildlife and, you know, DCR. We get... we do have a good stewardship agreement with them, and we, you know, we do have keys to the gates, and we take care of the trails on the Hoyok Range. And, you know, it's part of a state system that everybody relies on. And when part of it goes down, people get backed up, and they don't know where to go. And they're going to start to look for ways out. They're going to start to look for a new crossing, they're going to make their own. And that's just plain dangerous. We've had it happen in several neighborhoods where no... nobody knows where to go. So...
So what do we need to do?
So, yeah, I was going to say, I'm inclined to update the letter, to resend it.
I got a question for you, Dan. I understand what you're after from us. All it is, is supportive of what you're trying to do. So if we agree that this makes sense, you take this letter, and then what? What happens?
Well, it's been done before. We've sent them to, you know, Paul Janegy, Commissioner Roy, you know, we've been working with Dan Carey, we've been working with Joe Comaford. They're aware of the situation. So it's just reinforcement. You know, we just send it out to them. And, you know, it's just another vertebrae in the backbone to make sure that everybody knows that this is an issue. You know, like I said, you know, Mast dot already knows it's an issue, they already know the solution. DCR knows it's an issue, but, you know, it's, for some reason, it's kind of hard to drive it home. I mean, with the recent tragedy on Route Nine, maybe that could shed a little light.
Somebody...
Jane would like to speak.
One of the things you should add to the letter, I think one of the things you should add to the letter is the shared use of the trail and that part of it, specifically saying that, I mean, you know that, but let's put it out there, lack of voice.
You know, we're not ignorant to that fact. I don't think they are, but I think, you know, it's a good idea, we'll add that in.
I guess the reason I asked my question was, you don't get to go face to face with these people, you just send them a letter and...
No, we know who they are. I mean, we...
But do you get to meet with them?
Yes, we've... I mean, they... a couple of times a year, they'll come to our, you know, our association, our State Association meeting, where all the clubs, once a month, we get together with all the clubs in the state. There are 30 some odd clubs. And, you know, since quarantine has been happening, it's been terribly convenient, everybody's online. Where it used to be, everybody came to Northampton, and they come from, all the way from Boston, and they come from Pittsfield once a month. And at least a couple of times a year, we'd have DCR at the meeting, we'd have the EPOs at the meeting. Fish and Wildlife would send a delegate from time to time from their outfit. You know, there's, you know, we're always meeting with them. It's just, for some reason, a thorn in their side rather than a, you know, viable solution.
Well, I'm in favor of supporting this as long, you know, when you modify it so that it reflects the fact that you don't want to have sole use of it, so that the people that you're trying to get permission from will understand that you're not trying to be selfish here. I think that'll help you, and I think it'll make us feel better supporting you in that way.
Sure. I mean, I can... I can make a couple of edits, and when, I don't know if Larry's out of town or whatnot, maybe we could get him into the mix here and maybe submit to you a final draft at a future meeting, and we can have it sent out after your approval.
Sounds fine to me.
Sounds good to me.
Can we have a motion to that, please?
Can we move to approve pending?
Hold on, Steve's got a question.
Sorry.
We've always been telling everybody that it's multi-use from day one, and that's nothing new at all. We've been doing that forever. It's personally Larry, all the meeting, the team group, and he's been doing a lot of work, and he's always been multi-use.
And you would think that the DCR would understand that, because you use the trails on the Hoyok Range, you groom them, you have mountain bikers, you have people cross-country skiing on them. I mean, everybody uses those trails up there. I mean, so they should understand that. So, you know, so a motion by Amy, pending your letter to us?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Roll call vote, Chungalo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
And Nevin Smith?
Yes.
So with this vote, we're approving it already, so you don't need to come back to us, is that correct? You can just edit it?
I will send you the edited version, and, you know, as long as you all agree, you know, whoever, if the chair signs it or the whole board signs it, it doesn't really matter to me, as long as the letter goes out.
If you get it to us for the first meeting of December, we can just take a look at it.
Okay.
And if we don't have a problem, we don't even have to vote on it again?
Okay. I'm not sure if just a paper letter is going to go out, because Larry emailed and said that it should be CC'd to Doug Rice, the DCR Commissioner, as well as Dan Carey and Joe Comaford. They've seen these before, so...
I can help you distribute it from...
Perfect.
Once the Select Board signs it, because I've sent your letter out before for y'all. So I'm familiar with it.
Thank you all so much.
And you and I can work together on the letter, because I think there were some other things that might be valuable to add to it, like the amount of cars that go by that are on Route Nine every day.
Cool.
So, yeah, and we can get it on our letterhead.
Great. Thanks again, folks.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Good luck with this. Love the state. I'm on the state tonight.
Oh, I was going to say, I was like, sometimes it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission, but, you know.
Can I ask, will you just, for Jim Boyle, he was here for Northwest Auto Sales. Can you just let him know he's been approved and he can leave if he'd like?
Where is he?
On Zoom.
Oh, yes. Jim, Jim Boyle? Is he on Zoom? Can he hear?
Yeah, he's muted.
He might, yeah.
Jim?
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you? Didn't know you were on, but we did approve your license for tonight.
Thank you so much.
You're all set, unless you had, did you have anything you wanted to say to us, or just we're good?
No, just thank you guys very much.
All right. Good luck to you and your business.
All right, bye-bye.
All right.
I just noticed he was staying with us, I probably didn't...
Yeah. Thank you. Infrastructure fees, do you want to just go over that tonight, Carolyn?
Yep, yep. And I'm going to have actually Susan Glawatsky on remote, and she's going to review the advisory opinion. We did have a request to get Town Council's opinion on that infrastructure fee, and we did, and we had some discussions with Town Council. And Sue is here to explain it and what our recommendation is. But we just see Jane.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Sue. Welcome.
Thank you. So Lisa Mead sent us an advisory opinion regarding the facts of the infrastructure fee. There is mention in the initial facts that the March 3, 2021, meeting of the Select Board referenced this fee to be a sewer infrastructure fee, which we corrected. On April 6, 2022, it was explained and voted on by the selectmen that this is simply an infrastructure fee that will be utilized by the water and/or sewer department as needed to assist with increased operating expenses, including but not limited to debt service, capital costs, and maintenance. And specifically, we were looking at this for the Route Nine water sewer replacement project. She goes on to discuss the law and various sections of Mass General Law that we have accepted into our bylaws. And then she goes into an analysis, and I'm going to read her analysis, so, and I'm going to comment on it, because we had further discussion about it. She said, "Based on the aforementioned statutes, fees charged by the town of Hadley for water or for sewer must be related to actual use, unless such fees are for a betterment or special assessment, in which case the town may charge for potential use. Fees charged under either of these categories must be utilized for the provision of services in the respective categories. Therefore, any revenue generated through water and sewer bills must be used proportionally for the provision of water and sewer to the town residents." She says, "A general infrastructure fee is not authorized by the applicable statutes," meaning the ones that we had already adopted in our bylaws. And I said to her, "Okay, so I'm confused, because the bylaws that we have accepted, all of the criteria, we have followed with the infrastructure fee." And she said, "Well, they're not authorized by the applicable statutes, but they're not prohibited either." So she said, "I recommend the town adopt Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 39J, which would allow for the town to implement a pricing system which includes the cost of the provision of water and sewer services to the residents, including services not otherwise accounted for." So she is suggesting that you adopt Chapter 40, Section 39J, which essentially covers everything. I did say to her, "How do we remedy the charges we have already charged to residents?" And she said, "You already have, because you've apportioned them appropriately to water and sewer users."
Okay. So are we looking to have a vote on that tonight?
Motion in there for you.
Okay.
Under recommended action.
Okay.
So is that something that the Select Board can do, or does a town meeting have to approve this?
Does not have to be town meeting.
Select Board, have the authority to do that.
Okay.
So there is a motion to accept the MGL. Would anybody like to make that?
I will do it. I'll read it.
Take the motion.
You're going to... do you have it to read, Jane?
Yes. I move to accept the MGL, Chapter 40, Section 39J, which will allow the town to implement a pricing system which includes cost of the provision of water and sewer services to the residents, including services not otherwise accounted for.
Any further discussion? If none, roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote, Chungalo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
So moved. All right. We will go to the Town of Code of Conduct. We've all had a chance to review that from the last meeting. Does anybody have any changes or anything that did not appear to be good to approve? And would anybody like to make a motion? Any discussion on it?
I think Molly does.
Molly's trying to say something.
No, just making a motion to approve it, as is.
Further discussion? All those in favor, roll call vote.
Roll call vote, Chungalo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yeah.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
And Nevin Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a code of conduct for the town. We'll do Town Administrator Report.
Yes, it's very short. I had last week off, and the past few days have been playing catch-up. But I did want to make an announcement. The Hadley Senior Center, where we are right now, on November 17, which is tomorrow at 2:00 p.m., they often have coffee with a cop. And Haley wanted me to make sure, I shared this with the public, that tomorrow is going to be a forum with local professionals, including Hadley's co-responder with the Hadley Police Department, Emma Riley. She's a new social worker that responds to calls. She's from East Hampton. Liz Pluff, the Service Nets Director of Program Development. Seth Dunn, Jen Mutoni from the Pioneer Valley Coalition for Suicide Prevention. Cassie Kramer from the M.A. Massachusetts Association for Mental Health. And Carmen Lee, founder of Stamp Out Stigma. Anyone can come to that, and it's going to be a very informative, informal, but informative meeting.
We'll be recording it.
Excuse me?
We'll be recording it.
And Hadley Media will be recording it as well.
Perfect. Anything else?
That's all I have for right now.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other announcements? I do have a couple, just to remind people that there is a food drive going on at the Public Safety Complex. And they also still have their tree, angel tree available. If you want to adopt an angel, you can. So you can go to the police station and get a tag that's on their tree, and buy presents for some family. We'd appreciate it. I have one passing of Nancy Feldman, so condolences to her sons and her family. She's a lifelong resident. And I don't believe I said the last time Ken Parsons passed.
Ken Parsons, yeah.
So lifelong resident of Hadley also. So our condolences to his family also. Is that it?
Yeah.
I think so. Yes?
That's it.
Okay. Any others going on? We're good? No? All right. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Motion to adjourn.
Jinx.
That's because sing a song, go for it.
Roll call vote, Chungalo?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Isar?
Yes.
Keegan?
Yes.
And Nevin Smith?